Board members and the rest of you folks.
(laughing).
The general public. We'd like to thank you all for coming this afternoon. What we have thought we're going to do is we will finish just doing the policy reviews, we'll then close the workshop, open, reconvene the special meeting, deal with the letter, and then what we're going to do is we're going to boot the board procedures to the first available meeting in March, assuming that that's going to work with everybody's schedule. So basically, we'll be done then for today. We're going to number G on the workshop, we're going to delay that.
This is very...
So, yeah, if you...
Tuesday the 10th.
That's the intention. And what we thought we might do, maybe meet at 11:00. Mostly, this is for our board members because we're going to meet upstairs. I'm thinking maybe between 11:00 and noon or something, we could meet. At that time, we could do a working lunch or something up there, and then we'll go into expulsion because it sounds like we probably will have an expulsion that day.
(inaudible).
Yeah, I'm tentatively looking to do that at like 11:00 or 12:00 on the 10th if that's the... No, I was trying to not have us come in, you know, because we're going to be at all day. We'll have to be here by 4:00, so, yeah.
So 11 o'clock?
Yeah, tentatively, if we could mark that as 11:00. Doug, does that work with your schedule?
Yeah, I'm intent.
Okay.
To be determined.
To be determined. And this really is more of affecting us and Sam. You know, we love you all, but this is for, this is more housekeeping stuff for us. That we're going to do with upstairs again. I just think it's a better place for us to meet, to just kind of talk to each other. Okay, with that, we're going to do policy reviews, and Mr. Dixon.
Good afternoon. We have four today. Let me walk you through these. The first one on your list is a request to revise policy 2.22, school board meetings. The language adds section four regarding the public speakers, and it adds two citations. This is just a public meeting...
Chuck, turn your mic on, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, this is a public meeting statute. This language is just being inserted to state that someone can come to the podium and address the board at a public meeting regarding of any proposition before the board speaker shall hear the rules established by the board in accordance with Florida statutes.
Really, that's a segue into the next policy, 2.221, which is your public participation at the school board meetings.
So should we take them together? Or do you want to just...
Let's take them separately right now.
Okay.
I mean, really, what, I mean, not for not, the, what the statute has said is that, you know, if you have rules or a policy, and a policy is the same thing as a rule, that establishes your public participation for being able to speak at a meeting, and you follow that, then you're kind of immune from any type of allegation that you did not allow, you know, you violated the open meeting laws and didn't let the public have their input at a proper time. So what 2.22 did said, they added section six, which said, "We're going to establish a rule that's going to allow, that's going to delineate how the public is going to have their opportunity to speak." So I drafted 2.221, which is basically the meat and potatoes on how you're going to allow the public to speak. And we, to me, 2.22 just says we're going to look at 2.221.
Yeah, and 2.22, just board members, is what we'll also be talking about revising potentially as a result of our board procedures. And that, so that really is a, that may be the only thing I would say to the staff.
Potentially revise this if you're next meeting.
Right.
Put this on hold?
That's what I was just going to say. The only thing is, is that we can certainly give any direction on this language needed for this part of it, but, because what I'm, the two points that I'm talking to, maybe have this addressed that we've talked about on board procedure to add to this, is one, parliamentary procedure, because we don't even have it as part of our board policy. And so that was one of the things. And then also, how something gets on the agenda. And that's something that, it would fall under this as well. So I think, with the exception of number six...
Well, you're going to have, you're going to have another workshop.
Right.
I mean, you got to still go through this, you have to bring in, you know, for advertising, you know, for approval, approved to advertise, and you wait your 28 days and have, you know, before it can go into effect anyhow. And you can move forward with 2.221 without moving forward with 2.22 if you want.
Correct. And that was what I, my intention was for have us to move forward on that. 2.22, we just probably need to delay until we have our workshop. So if there's any new language we want to add into it, then we just need to provide some any input on, in this case, number six, is what you're talking about suggesting, the new, the language to be correct.
Correct. I'm going to move on to 2.221?
Yes, unless, unless board members have anything.
Okay, this one, as Mr. Bradshaw stated, he wrote this one, so, I mean, I'll just turn it over to him. Let me do it.
Yeah, what I did is with, like I said before, the way, when the statute came out, I started, the new statute came out and talked about, you know, if you have a rule or a policy that allows, you know, the public to participate in a meeting and be able to talk to, you know, items that are on the agenda and have their input prior to you, you know, reaching a decision on what you want to do, and you set forth how you're going to do that, then, you know, you're deemed to have complied with the statute, you know, once you do that. So I basically tried to take what we normally do and just codify it or place it in the policy. And so I can, I can kind of run through it. I hope that you all had an opportunity to make, to read it, and if you have any questions. The first paragraph just says, you know, we understand it's important. The second paragraph says, "At the commencement of regular and special meetings, we're going to allow public comment on any agenda item." And that's can be, you know, for matters on the regular agenda or on the consent agenda if they need to. And also says that the board shall allow for public comment on matters not contained on the board agenda at a time certain as contained on the agenda, which is what we already do. You know, we have our, at the very beginning of the meeting, public input, and at the end of the meeting, public input. This does cover special meetings also, because that doesn't, the statute doesn't delineate between, you know, a regular meeting and a special meeting. So since a special meeting is the same as a regular meeting, they need to have, you know, an opportunity to come and address you on whatever they want to at the end of the special meeting also. So that's...
Have anything written that says that we don't do that in workshop? And it's still, fill that out?
It does, it does not, it does not state that, because you don't have to have public input in a workshop, because you're not voting on anything.
Right.
You know, the purpose of the statute was to make sure that you have input, you know, prior to you taking a vote. A workshop is more of an opportunity for you to be able to discuss your ideas amongst yourself and receive input from, from district staff, and to have conversations and the sharing of those, those facts and ideas, and to get some consensus on some directions that you, that you may want to look at.
So the statute only addresses voting?
Correct. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So number one, our agenda items. A is the procedure for speaking at a meeting, and the green card. So it's, you know, at meetings after the adoption of the agenda, members of the audience are permitted to speak on one or more items, including consent or non-consent agenda items prior to a discussion. Except, and I put in here, except items pertaining to employee and student discipline, because if you, if you're moving forward with an employee termination, you know, you're not, you should not get that input prior to, because you're going to sit as the governing body. And in student discipline, you're not, we're not going to talk about anyhow. I can't stop someone from coming up here if they want to come up here and gripe about, you know, some type of student discipline thing. But y'all have been here long enough to know that I've warned them, that now they are opening up this up to public comment, or they're opening it up and taking it out of their confidentiality. And then I kind of gave a little thing on how you do it. So you get a green card, it's delivered to the left, you know, it's really kind of basic, step by step by step on what to do. I don't, you know, I don't need to read this to you. I mean, if anybody has really any questions or does not like a portion of it, you know, some of the things that I highlighted in here, you know, board will not act on any other matter raised by speaker prior to the next regular meeting, so somebody can't come up here and say, "I demand you all vote on whether or not this happens," you know, you're not, you're not going to do that. And also, it's generally not your practice to respond, except to correct inaccuracies, so that you know, kind of prevents the getting into an argument with someone. And then basically, you have your open public comments, the same thing applies to public hearings, and your regulation of disruptive speech on what, on what you can do.
We have the item that we read here, does that need to be part of that, or is that just, just a good practice that we need to just continue to do?
Well, I think it's a good practice, and it's kind of addressed, you know, the chairperson of each board meeting before which public comment is permitted shall administer the rules of their reports conduct. But I think, I think this kind of covers, you know, what's in there. It's not a bad idea to read that if you're going to have a lot of public comment, because sometimes we give...
That's when we usually...
10 or 15 green cards, it's good to read it, you know. See, that's kind of a warning on how to regulate that when you have one person there to make it a little bit easier. Most of the time, you know, if you get a couple of people coming to the board to speak, it's a big deal.
Any comments, questions, changes? Doug, you okay with this? Okay?
I just asked, and then let's put it on for average, or approval, approved to advertise at the next meeting, then if no one has a change...
So I'm afraid you can't make the motion.
No, we don't need to, because we're just...
It's a workshop.
Yep. It's, we're workshop. No, we do, don't talk about it.
For actions, we'll just put it on the agenda on the 7th or the 10th, 3/10, to approve for advertising.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Okay. So then, moving on to the next item, this is one that was asked to be brought forward. I think you got a presentation before the break regarding the measles outbreak, and this is kind of a follow-up to that, policy 5.09, requirements for original entry. We did, Pam did identify some language that needs to be updated in the policy 5.09, and I'll pass that out to you.
So the one that's on the agenda doesn't have the, that it have the revised language?
This basically doesn't change the policy, it just updates the language to reflect the Department of Health, as opposed to the Department of Children and Family Services.
So I think number one, if we need to put an A there to present A certification. I guess you could put a present certification. That's okay that way, it's okay.
Okay, sure. Okay.
Who came up with this title? I know it's not our staff, I think it's just, it's just an odd title for what it is.
I'm not sure about that, but...
No, it's okay.
I'll go through the language here that's been revised, policy 5.09, section 1A, students who are under 22 years of age instead of 21, and/or are attending adult education classes. And then section 1B...
I would only suggest that you do the same as you did with 21, and put parentheses, put 22 in there, in parentheses after it.
Okay.
It said 21, print, it spelled out. I mean, that's typical the way you do it, to make sure that people, it sounds silly, but it prevents people from not misinterpreting. I assume the reason for the 22 is to accommodate your exceptional students, that you have to provide educational services.
And did anybody have any other comments on 5.09?
Yes.
Okay. And then the final policy for you is policy 9.40. This is a, a new policy to address advertising, advertisers permitted to advertise as recommended by Mr. Bradshaw. We did take this to the Policy Informs Committee, but it kind of got a little bit convoluted, so that basically, Mr. Bradshaw's restructured it, and I'm sure you'll have some discussion about this, but I'll, Mr. Bradshaw, if you want to...
I mean, it's, some time ago, we were having issues with people in advertising, and also, it's also going to cover political views and distribution of flyers and different things like that on our campuses. But, you know, it'd be, you know, years ago, it started off with people wanting advertising with school buses on the radios, and then it's kind of morphed into, once we have district webpages, you know, you're always getting bombarded, we want to advertise on your webpage, you know, or, you know, I want to advertise in the yearbook, or a flyer, or I want to distribute something to students, which this does, it's specifically, we have another policy that covers that. Or I want to buy a banner, put a banner up on the baseball field or on the football field, or, you know, all these people, they're, they want to donate money and receive some business benefit back from it, which is understandable. But without some type of regulation in place, then you're subjecting yourself to whether you have an open forum or a limited forum on how, on what you are and are not going to permit. And so when I drafted this, I drafted a while ago, and I tried to encompass most of what I could think of on what, the issues that we would face in advertising. I will tell you that I was speaking to Kenny this morning, and I know at La Canto High School, they've had someone approach them saying, "Hey, we want to sell La Canto High School an app for your phone now, so that, you know, I guess you could install this app on your phone." And I'm not quite sure what the app allows you to do.
It allows you to know when sporting events are going to be in other school functions, but then it has advertising pop up on it.
Right. And, and, you know, with, with this policy here, you know, it is going to be, be either, you know, something tangible that you can hold in your hands, that's going to be on a school campus, or governing, or on a school district website, or the, or a, or a school's website, which are under our control. I'm not quite sure how to handle an outside app, because this limits what you can put on a webpage, you know, they can't have where, you know, you click on the phone number and it directs you to an alternate webpage. And I think Dr. Guinness can help me with that. If we find out that, you know, we could immediately yank that down off of our webpage.
Correct.
I think we have concerns about an app, and how we would monitor, you know, something that we don't have the ability to yank down immediately. It's something that I can investigate, because I can tell you now that, you know, on my phone, I have a pile of apps, and I think that's part of the way, you know, younger people receive things nowadays, you know, just through, just through, you know, applications. But, you know, the basic, it, it talks about what type of advertising that we will, that we will allow, you know, it talks about where we're going to allow advertising. It specifically states it does not intend to create a public forum, so we're going to limit this down to some very specific things. Tells, talks about, you know, in school-sponsored publications, on school buildings and school property, on our district internet and websites, prohibited venues where we're not going to allow it, restrictions, and on what we will, you know, advertisements shall not express political, religious, or other personal viewpoints, must comply with all the requirements of this policy. These, these things are going to have to get approved in advance prior to, you know, being allowed, which it generally is, you know, by the principal or their designated or their superintendent. You know, it has some very strict prohibitions on what you cannot have in there, which is on page three, D1 through, I almost forgot, two pages there, 1 through 12. And, and it has an approval process, it establishes a committee by the superintendent to approve these. And I, I put that in there so that you have consistency from one school to the next. The section of the Florida statute on 112.3143, because it's going to be a committee, is a, that's the voting conflict, so, you know, I can't sit on the advertising committee and approve my own law firm's, you know, advertising, you know, or my brother's law firm or something like that. So it's kind of the same restrictions that you have to follow while you're here, you know, being nearing to the gain, your personal gain or that of a relative. And, you know, unless anybody else has a question about it, I don't have the job ready.
Yeah, I've got a question. Oh, go ahead.
No, I was just saying, in other words, we're revisiting then allowing on our school website advertising?
Yes, ma'am. Now, you can sit there and say, "We don't want advertising on our, on school websites," and I can take it back out. I just kind of drafted, well, that's why we have the workshop.
I think part of it has been that they've been doing it, and we've had no policy.
Well, who's advertising?
You're talking about the school, not the districts.
Um, school.
Different schools.
Like, schools will have one, and like, if I go to Citrus High School, I don't know if they still do, but they had where you could get a shirt, or you could buy something, you could buy, it was, they use it as fundraisers. And so they're...
So it's bigger than our website or district?
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. I don't think we have anything on ours.
No, we don't.
Banners or anything like that. No, I'm sorry, it's ours.
Well, this, this does talk about, and the Citrus County School Board website shall be permitted in accordance with the terms, so, I mean, if you're...
But that's a choice, it doesn't mean we're mandated to, correct?
But you can access the school websites through our website, so they're connected that way.
Why dislike advertising on our district website?
And I don't disagree, I think that's a good, I think that's, that's an appropriate practice, especially if we don't have to do it. But I think the idea is if we, for some reason, wanted to do it, and you'd probably vote against it, so we don't, but, I mean, the idea is that we have a policy that would actually govern it.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, I had a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Doug.
And I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Doug, I will go back and read that to make sure that it's your choice, and it's not something that is absolute, or I'm going to force to have to do that.
It says the school board will permit commercials.
Yeah, I will, I will go back and...
And maybe it should be may permit.
And readdress that issue.
Instead of will.
And to make sure that would, that, depending on how many things that you want to change, that may be something you can address at a meeting to see if it's okay to go forward with advertising.
I think, though, Ms. Powers is right, it may, it may be that we want, may instead of will. Mr. Dodd?
Yes, I just want to make sure there's no confusion regards to, like, athletic programs. I know there's a lot of churches that will purchase an ad supporting their youth that play in the football team, or whatever the athletic event may be. Now, that's not going to be any violation, is it?
As lo, well, it does indicate not promoting, I don't think so, as long as it's not...
What's the example again?
A church buying an ad in a program, supporting Citrus football.
ABC church, you know, supports, you know, Citrus football.
Or...
I don't think that's a problem. I do think it's a problem if ABC church says, you know, "We support Citrus football," and then you go farther and, you know, start espousing religious doctrine or something along those lines, then, then no.
What if they were to put worship times for church or whatever on there? Probably not.
No problem? Is that what you're saying?
Well, that's why they would have to go through the advertising committee, just to make sure.
So we would have to, give some flexibility, pardon.
And if the Unitarians or the Wiccans want to advertise, they then have a right as well.
Sure. Right. But if they have, yeah, so I just want to make sure that, you know, at that point, you know, in one, advertisements, you know, you talk about local civic or community organizations, and then in two, venues, you, you put in there religious and/or other personal, political religious or other personal viewpoints. So I was a little confused there, I just want to make sure we're not going to prevent...
Doug, where are you? I want to make sure I'm...
Okay.
Well, if you look on, on page one, yeah, on advertisements, it obviously talks about, yeah, B, I mean, this is to encourage a positive relationship between school and the community, and then B2, statements of support, which a lot of these, what I'm thinking of are those statements of support for students, for Citrus County Schools, students and programs and advertisements purchased by local civic or community organizations. So then we go down to two venues for these advertisements. You get into A, it says these venues are a forum for debate, advocacy, or expression of political, religious, or other personal viewpoints. So, like I said, I know there's a lot of...
Yeah, I don't think that it's a problem to put in there that we support, you know, the same, but it's not a place to, to, for lack of a better term, preacher style of religion, you know, to, you know, for support, and I think that goes back up, you know, congratulatory supportive statements for students and their advertising, you know, those types of things are, would be fine, but it's not, it's not the venue to, I don't, I don't quite know how to word it.
Well, if you're, if you're advocating...
If you're advocating...
I mean, that, I mean, I guess if you put your, the times of worship, then you're advocating coming to worship.
Worship times, I...
Right.
Yeah, I will look at that just to make sure, if I can see where that would be.
I think it would be probably, if you're advocating, if I put John 3:16, that would probably be...
I'll, I'll check in on worship times, if I...
With the 93...
I mean, they, in the past, there have been churches taking ads out by kids to youth group activities on Wednesday night. We've had a variety of different things.
Well, and having a policy...
No, I know, I'm just saying, those are the kind of things that, I'm just trying to give examples of what that might be talking about.
I understand. I'll, I'll, I will look at that, and maybe we can bring this back for another workshop then, because that sounds like we might have some more conversation that I'm going to need, that I'm going to need to go through, or maybe I can just call, you know, Mr....
Yeah, I don't have a problem too, though, if you, if you, if, if there's some dialogue you can do, and if you just, when we bring it back for, to set the, to set the...
Public hearing.
Thank you. That we can, we can, if there's a change, we still have time to make that change at that time, when we go to set the...
And just another, to piggyback there, with our email distribution, I know Mr. Dixon is kind of the gatekeeper for what goes out with, in, as far as information that's distributed to our staff, and it could be something from a concert at the Rock Crusher Canyon, all the way to something as far as Whispering Pines events. So is there, and I know that he has been very good at critiquing those things before mass mailing goes out. I see, I see our email enlist is having an advertising value. So is there something that we can do in here as far as partnerships with non-political entities? Can...
Well, that's not actually advertising.
Yeah, that's the intranet that only goes out to...
To our staff.
To staff.
But that's a...
It's like a commune, Baltimore.
Yeah, there is, though, there was a reference in this policy having to do with the email, and then addressed it.
That has a value.
And it said, though, it...
Advertising value.
You had it in here. It said something about it may not be used.
Well, it says our, our automated phone system won't be used, and we won't email the students.
Yeah, we won't email students, but our intranet, I mean, we get, I remember getting the consent information from, about Rock Crusher Canyon.
Generally speaking, the, the things that get distributed are like special events and things that are community events, and if they're offering a discount to Citrus County School Board staff, that kind of thing.
Electronic mail sent from, electronic mail address is provided by Citrus County Schools shall not be used for advertising. That's what it says in this policy. I would, I think that the problem is, is that there is some conflicting, I think if we, if we didn't have that...
You may not be, you may not do that anymore. You have to understand that the school district is the largest employer, and contains the largest captive audience in this, in the county, in regards to your employees and your students. Okay? So anytime that outsider, outside community can get access, easy access in, it's to their benefit if they're trying to advertise something or to promote something. And so you can go to an open forum, where you can allow everybody to come in and send anything they want in, or... they want in, or you can limit it, you know, for the protection of, of your students and, and your employees, but you can't, sometimes you cannot have it both ways. So what I was asked to do was try to draft a policy that allowed, you know, and it was more along the lines of fundraising and to make money, you know, to supplement budgets and different things like that. So, you know, you, you can't have it where you can do whatever you want and then have restrictions on certain things. And so this is for, you know, protection of the students, and it's also for protection of staff, which is why it has the prohibitions that are included.
Well, and if we, again, trying to fill us, you know, budget gaps with creative avenues, if we, if we have the technology where we can have a tab or something so that we can sell advertising that can be attached or dropped in a certain tab on the website, so those people that do peruse our website can go to, uh, for staff discounts, and then they can pull up the JCPenney's fifty percent off, but, the thing is a bounty, we need to sell that.
I was going to say, but that, that would need to be managed, and, you know, there's a, especially where, where, where would you draw the line on?
Well, I agree, but we're already having information like that filtered to our staff, and we're not, we're not charging anybody anything.
I wouldn't, I'd be careful about keeping the two separate, because, you know, it says you will not, I mean, those aren't advertisements if you're, if you're just making people aware of-
That there's a fifty percent off.
Yeah, that there's, um, an event in Inverness or downtown Inverness, or, you know, that, and I wouldn't charge for that, because then if you charge for that kind of stuff, then you have to, like Mr. Bradshaw said, then you have to allow everything. You know, there, everybody loves it while everybody's happy, until someone says, until, you know, the nudie bar out of Tampa wants to advertise on your webpage or put up a banner at the football game, and you tell them no, but you have the local bar with their stuff up there, and you don't have a policy in place that says, you know, we're not creating this open forum, we're, we're keeping this closed and only under these strict guidelines, and you end up in a First Amendment lawsuit, you know, fighting for your life over stuff. That's why you do this, so that you can regulate it. And when you regulate something, you know, it's kind of like giving a yes or no answer. You're going to make half the people happy, you're going to make half the people, you know, sad, so.
What do you think about, um, if a private school said they wanted to advertise, and under this, there would be, I'm not sure, anything that would prohibit us from having to-
Bad of the year, book.
Yeah, they would have to accept the advertising because it, it's of an educational nature. It's, it may or may not be of a political nature, it may not be even of, depending on how the ad's written, of a spiritual nature. So, yeah, so, I mean, I, I, I see that, I'm, I struggle, because I'm, I'm with Ms. Balfour, that I, I'm looking for revenue streams that we don't have, and can we tap into them? But, but I, I know in the past, it's a little bit of Pandora's box for us.
Well, that's the same thing that we did with the, um, distribution of literature to students, nine point five.
Which this paragraph, by the way, actually ties into that.
It does, this doesn't account for that, because when Dave Stevens was the Director of Risk Management, he came in here with three or four three ring binders that was this thick, and he, and it was like about this time of the year, said, this is what we've already been asked to distribute to the students. It is taking up a pile of time, they throw it on the floor, you know, they don't want to look at it, it never makes it home, our teachers have to distribute all that, and the board at that time went to a closed forum where unless it had an educational purpose, it's not to be distributed to students. So, I mean, and because at that point in time, anybody could bring anything in and hand anything they wanted out, and yes, it made a lot of people mad, because, you know, Joe's Taekwondo wasn't allowed to distribute a thousand flyers into, you know, the middle school and primary schools at that point in time. But, you know, you also understand that you have this captive audience that, you know, that's, that's very easy to print out a thousand flyers and have them distributed if we have an open forum, so that's why we did that. But we don't really have anything as far as advertising is concerned. I'll do whatever y'all want me to do, but we don't have a, a policy in effect that governs, okay, what's going to be able to go on a sign at, at Citrus, I mean, they're playing baseball now, or, you know, somebody wants to buy a banner and they want to put a banner up, we have no control really of what goes on that sign versus what goes on a sign in Crystal River, or what goes on a sign in, in La Canta, besides good common sense and the graciousness of the community, you know? But, um, that's why, you know, we're trying to do it sometimes.
Is there, is there anything, that goes along, I think this line, is there anything in this, and I, I don't think I've seen it, but maybe I'm missing, that would immediately prohibit any of the common practices we've been doing? And in particular, I'm thinking of, you know, sports, a lot of our sports is offset by advertising costs and-
And programs.
And programs, and not just sports, but, you know, banned and things. I don't, I didn't see anything, but I just want to make sure that we don't all of a sudden are, really, you know-
I think the issue Doug brought up that Wes is going to look into is just-
Okay. And then I think is that may be modifiable or, or workable.
Well, well, and wait, on, on page five, it says, any advertisement on a school site or a school activity or a school publication shall be approved by the principal designee. So it does get that, you know, the basic local, you know, homeschool-
Right, but the principal's going to reference the policy, I would, I would certainly.
Oh, sure, yeah, absolutely. It's going to be subject to the, it's going to be subject to the policy. I mean, you know, the things that are contained in, in section three, which are absolute prohibitions, you know, uh, three D, you know, can't promote unlawful or illegal goods, you can't put up a, a sign that says, you know, buy weed at, you know, somewhere, you know, you can't, you know, you don't want something that's, um-
Well, on, on eleven, you do say, just broadly, religious, religious issues, so I, I would, to me, um, a, a church isn't a religious issue, but, you know, you also put in there candidates, so I guess if somebody owned a business and they became a candidate for public office, um, that's when their ad would come down.
I, I think it's different if they're still doing it in there, if they're-
I think there's a difference between me putting a sign up that says Bradshaw in Mountjoy serving Citrus County since nineteen fifty, you know, Wes Bradshaw running for state representative.
What we had this year was we had a candidate for school board show up on a school campus and start putting flyers up at the teacher's windshield.
Right. And we had nothing to stop that.
We thought it was against policy, but it is if you're an employee, it's not, and he wasn't employed, so there was nothing we could do.
And there's a difference, Doug, and I also see a difference in saying, you know, ABC Baptist Church supports, you know, Citrus, the Citrus County School District versus ABC Church promotes abortion or right to life, or whatever, you know, and, you know, whatever that is, you know, that's, that's more of an issue that you're trying to promote rather than, you know, because it goes back at the very beginning of, of the policy, talks about what you can advertise for, um, you know, permit commercial and charitable advertising to place paid, and express the advertised public support of the schools, of the district's school students and programs. All advertising regardless of the platform or of the advertisement is restricted to such a matter. And then additionally, it says congratulatory and supportive statements for students and advertisements purchased by their parents, family, and friends, and statements of support for, for the school, school students and programs and advertisements purchased by local civic or community organizations. So, I mean, it kind of levels it down to that.
So a church were seen as a community organization, basically.
I mean, they are, I mean, it is.
Until I think that, yeah, until, until they're trying to promote a, a thing.
A particular view.
As long as we, we'll never get confused on that issue, as long as there's an understanding of that, you know, and it still might be good though, Wes to look at-
I, I will go back and double check on that.
Okay, all right, I appreciate it.
And I just want to make sure the-
I mean, I understand.
The Thomas made that we don't want, uh, the, the school, the voodoo dog or something advertising.
Well, I think that's the problem is, I think that if you, that in reality, if you allow First Baptist Church as an example, I think that you have to allow for First Islamic Group of, of America. I mean, I don't think we could, we have that, that right to distinguish the difference, and I, and Mr. Dodd, I know that's not what you're suggesting.
No, that's not what you're saying.
But I just want to make sure our board understands.
I, I do think that, you know, when I looked at this, it talked about paid advertising, and this kind of goes back with, um, what Mr. Mullen mentioned, there are sometimes people who put out, you know, those flyers, like, you know, what if a business wanted to come into the school and put out flyers? I mean, it really doesn't say in here-
Well, nine point five oh, they can't put it out to students.
But what about the parking lot at the high school?
I think that's the question. We had that situation, how would we be able to promote it?
What about at a football game?
It would have to be approved by the principal first and comply with the policy.
With the policy nine point?
No, with this, would they put it on students' cars? Or to put it-
Well, let's just say they go in the parking lot and put flyers out. I mean, this, they're not paying, they're just want to put, you know, they want to promote their business.
They still, they still have to comply with the policy, or we may take them down. They should have it approved first.
Right.
And then if the principal will allow it, you know, then, um, you know, if, if they were going to win the district championship and the bunch of kids want to put on after the, you know, after the game, run around and put stuff on the park, said, hey, principal, can we put congratulations to our district champs under the windshield wipers, that's something different than, you know, Joe's Pizza, buy one, get one free.
The, the problem is, is we have no, um-
We have nothing.
We have no recourse, though. Person does something, and like, for example, the, the incident we had where a candidate blanketed parking lots, we really have no recourse the one way or the other.
Well, you have the recourse of taking it down because of the violation of our policy and-
Right.
And, and not facing that you're being discriminatory, in fact, because you're not allowing my First Amendment right to be political and espouse my political views. Because you can, you could close down your campus, um, as far as, you know, what type of forum that you want to, want to have.
And at that point too, I would assume that you could deal with trespassing issues if they, if they were, the person was in the, in thing where, pre, prior to that, we wouldn't even have had that ability. Or we, it still is a question.
Well, yes, because the argument that would have been made or would be made is that, you know, I'm entitled to be there, I'm not prohibited from being there, I'm entitled to, you know, to voice my opinion on, on, and my political views, and whether I can do this, and, so you take all that away. Because basically it says you got to get it approved, it can't, can't be espousing a political viewpoint, and, you know, if you do it, then you, if you have the opportunity to say, we are not an open forum campus and it's closed forum or, or very limited forum, and that's outside of our policy, you can do, you can do it again, you know, we'll have to trust that.
Yeah, here's just the, and I, and I, because I would not want this to happen, I think this may go along with what Mr. Dodd's concern is. We rent our schools to religious organizations.
Yeah, it's, if that's, it says it does not, this policy doesn't, you know, take away from our facilities use stuff, so absolutely not.
Okay, so there would not be a problem if they now, on their rental on Sunday, they put out their Church of God, John three sixteen?
Absolutely, yes, it does not, it does not prohibit that.
Mike, I, I think we want to make sure that we protect that.
So I need to look into the religious aspect, to make sure that we're good there, and make sure that we have the choice of the webpages, um, as far as that, not a shell where we did, came up and having to do it. Was there anything else?
Other than that, let's put it on, and, and we can address those when it comes to us.
If, if it turns out to be a bigger issue that I need to discuss, then I'll pull it and ask where it could be placed on a webpage, and I'll try to brief y'all on, on that.
We'll bring it back as another workshop, right?
No, I think they're going to want to, you want to bring it back to-
Only if they're- No, we'll bring it back to advertising. We can work it out at that time.
Only if it turns into-
A bigger issue.
A bigger issue, and I have more questions that I need to answer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
That concludes our policy issues.
Thank you. Board members, uh, we're going to go ahead and then, and before all done, we're going to adjourn the workshop, and then I'm going to go ahead and reopen our special board meeting, and like, thank you for, uh, the input. Uh, if you have a letter, a proposed letter in front of you with trying to incorporate those changes, if you'd like to take an extra minute to look at it. And if there is, if that is acceptable, then, um, I don't think I need to have to take a vote on it, do we not, I can just, we can just do it by consensus?
No, to take a vote on it, I mean, y'all are approving the letters.
Okay.
The only question I have, I noticed that we are focusing in on, mentioning Chuck Dixon is our representative.
Chuck Dixon is our representative because he is the Director of Planning and Development.
Well, and I realize that as far as his-
Because he was called out in their meeting.
So that's why you're, you're definitely adamant about putting him in there, not just having him-
Absolutely, I, I believe that-
He decides to move on for whatever he wants.
No, no, the reason for that had, in this letter, has to do with, he was specifically called out in their meeting. And, and, and board members, my feeling is, is if there was an issue, and I don't necessarily believe Mr. Dixon, there was the issue that's been made, I think that that should have been something that a commissioner could have addressed to their administrator, their administrator could have talked to our superintendent, that would have been the chain of command. But to, in a public meeting, basically call out and address down that, I, I just feel that we need to send a message to them of how we feel about Mr. Dixon, so that was my, and, and Ms. Balfour, I, I don't disagree with what you're, you're thinking and concerns on that. So I, I, my feeling is that's, I think we need to send them a message of how we feel about Mr. Dixon representing.
Yeah, in general, the chief of action.
Yeah, I mean, we, yeah, I don't, I want to think, make it clear, we, our staff, we value, this, this board has had, I mean, today's a great example, we've been sitting there working together with our staff.
Well, I'd like to move, we send the letter referencing school board representation on the planning and development commission board to the board of county commissioners, and authorize the chairperson to execute.
Second?
I have a motion by Ms. Powers and a second by Ms. Balfour to approve, um, I'm sorry, can you repeat that? The, yeah, approve authorizing the commission, uh, the chairperson to send the school board representative, the letter on the school board represent, representation on the planning and development commission board. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries four zero. Before I adjourn, the other thing I would just say, and it's not necessarily that we need to discuss it today, but I think that, that much of this, and the issues that we've dealt with when it comes to concurrency and it comes to impact fees, we're going to need to address that in our interlocal agreement. I know you have it on your desk. It would be my feeling that we need to be serious about the fact that this, for example, is an issue that we see as part of that interlocal agreement. Right now, they're trying to strip all of that away from the school district. I'm concerned that we let that happen, that we don't let that happen, and I think that one of the places we need to focus on is that interlocal agreement. So, uh, with that, I, I give that to you, Mr. Wes, and, and again, if you have any questions, I know Mr. Bradshaw is always willing to sit down with each of you and, and do that, we need to encourage doing that. With that, board members, thanks for hanging in there. Staff members, thank you very much. We are adjourned.
Thank you.